Thank you. Clerk Seegrist, can you please take a roll call?
Trustee Borninski.
Good evening. I'm here in Canton Township.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening. I'm here in Canton Township.
Trustee Ganguly.
Good evening. I'm here in Canton Township.
Supervisor Graham Hudak.
Good evening. Here in Canton Township.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Seegrist is in attendance as well. Trustee Snyderman.
I am also here. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Just to let everybody know, we are saying where we are because this is a hybrid meeting. And so we are stating that we are in Canton Township. So can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of item G15, which is consider waiving the bidding process and approve the installation of temporary fencing around the public safety generator?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Can I hear a motion to approve the minutes for August 10th, 2021?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Next, we have-
Madam Supervisor, can I- are we doing all voice votes or a roll call?
Yes, voice votes. Diane Slavens, who is not here, said she probably wouldn't be able to come. So if she comes, she'd just be a spectator.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will now do public comment. Public comment is for a three-minute comment. You can please state your name and whether you're a resident or a business. It's for three minutes. And if we have any- if we have to get back to you about something, we can do that. So should we start online to see if we have any public comments? Any hands raised? Okay, we're just- we're starting online. Do you see anything online?
I see nobody who has raised their hand or indicated that they would like to make public comment online.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
How you doing? I'm Rich Keenan. I'm just a citizen of Canton. I was here two weeks ago when I- just still the same question is, I know that between the townships, et cetera, there's been various amounts of money that's been dumped into the townships. As there's been not in 2019 and 2020, no fireworks in Canton. I'm just wondering what we're doing to track what hasn't been done, to see that it's not being carried over year to year. It may be. But the question is, is it any year what's being spent? And what brought it up was literally deputy supervisor's position. What's being addressed to make sure that the dollars for the budgets are being followed as compared to, you know, money that's being allocated to certain things where Biden can say they can use for anything, they can't be used for anything. He's saying that this was passed for either Rebuild America Plan or something else, and he's using it for whatever. And I'm just trying to make sure that on an overall basis, we're tracking where the dollars are going for Canton.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Keenan. If you want, you can call my office and we can go over that again. Like, okay? Thank you. Any other comments? Public comments? Nope. Anybody online again? Public comments, public comments, public comments. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, can I have a motion to pay the bills, please?
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Motion passes. Well, I'm proud to say our next item on the agenda are presentations. We had some interns this year come in over the summer, and they're going to be doing their presentations to us of some of the work that they've done for the township while they've been here. They will go planning supervisor's office and then engineering. They'll talk about what they've been doing, and they'll give a little bit of introduction to themselves also as they come up. So first up, we have from the planning group, Ashley Amy, Maggie Huntley, Christine Ross, and Grace Whitney. You can come up to the podium, and we have your slides up there. If you want to just talk, just give a little introduction each of you for yourselves.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We're the four planning interns. We've been working here since the beginning of May. And tonight, we're going to share with you guys a little bit about ourselves and the projects we've been working on. My name is Grace Whitney. I received my Bachelor's of Science in Earth and Environmental Sciences from Wright State University down in Dayton, Ohio. Right now, I am about to start my second year of my Master's in Urban and Regional Planning at Eastern Michigan. I'm originally from Emily City, which is in the Thumb area. My favorite hobby is playing tennis. I'm currently on the women's tennis team at Eastern Michigan.
Hello, my name is Maggie Huntley. I got my Bachelor's in Urban and Regional Planning at Michigan State. I am also a current master student at Michigan State for the planning program. I'm from the Ipsy Ann Arbor area, and my hobby involves coaching gymnastics.
Good evening. My name is Christine Ross. I just recently graduated with a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science from Eastern Michigan University. This fall, I will be attending Wayne State University to kick off my Master's in Urban Planning degree. I am originally from Grand Rapids, and my hobbies include gardening and taking care of houseplants.
Hello, I'm Ashley Amy, and I'm currently attending Eastern Michigan University, pursuing my Bachelor's in Regional and Urban Planning with a minor in Sustainability. I've lived in Canton Township my whole life. I was born and raised here. And my favorite hobby is kayaking.
Over the course of the summer, we've had a good bunch of common tasks that we've all kind of collectively done, which includes site plan reviews, assigning addresses, landscape and site inspections, file digitization, certificates for zoning compliance, reviewing zoning ordinance and master plans for the future updates, and preparing zoning confirmation letters. Next slide, please.
You guys are doing a great job. Get a little bit closer to the microphone, because we want to hear you.
Oh, you want me closer?
Yes.
Okay. So I worked on- mainly worked on the sidewalk and trails gap analysis project. The larger map that you see there is the whole township detailing the existing gap and pending sidewalks in the township. The smaller image is just kind of a zoomed-in approach, because it's a little hard to see. There's a lot going on on the big map, but it highlights section 21, which is where we currently are. You can see it's showing the Heritage Park area. The first table that you see details the total mileage for pending gap in existing sidewalk. The next two tables, collectively, we went around the township, giving a ranking for each of the sidewalk gaps for constructibility and usefulness, giving it a one, two, or three. So for constructibility, it's easy, medium, and hard constructibility. For usefulness, it's most useful, medium use, and least useful. Next slide, please.
This summer, I've been working with our tree inventory that we have in the township. In 2019, the previous planning interns went around and took an inventory of street trees that are located along major roads, in township parks, and on municipal properties. So mostly, most of the trees that are under the management of the township. I've been managing and organizing this data so that we can use it to plan for pruning, removal, and planting. It also helps us gauge the benefits that the trees provide the township, like stormwater retention, carbon storage, air filtration, temperature regulation for adjacent buildings, and increasing property values. So this is an example of a calculation that can be done using the National Tree Benefit Calculator. That's through the National Arbor Society. These tree benefits, you can use them to calculate yearly benefits for one tree based on species, location, and size. So this is an example of a 20-inch white oak on a residential property. And there's a pie chart that indicates what it provides in dollar amount for different types of natural benefits. And this tree in particular provides $199 in benefits every year. So there are 8,209 trees in the inventory, and I went through and did that for each of those trees. And in total, they provide over $600,000 in annual benefits. In 2021, we're planning to remove all of the dead trees and stumps that we have in the inventory and prepare a plan for future planting to maximize the value of the trees in the coming years.
All right. So the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program is administered through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, or MEDC for short. So RRC is a voluntary, no-cost statewide certification program that was established to promote and support communities through all development procedures and processes. So this program aims to identify and engage community stakeholders, attract new businesses, and streamline the development process for everyone involved. So this summer, I helped initiate the RRC program for Canton Township. And I completed several tasks required for the six best practices. The six best practices are plans and engagement. So that works with updating the master plan, creating a capital improvements plan, a corridor plan, and a public participation plan. Best practice two is zoning, and that helps with alignment with the master plan and any updates that would be necessary. Best practice three is development review. That is more of an internal process to help with streamlining, tracking, and joint meetings. Best practice four is boards and commissions. So you would help to adopt bylaws and establish joint meeting procedures. Best practice five is economic development. So that would be to create an economic development strategy and some marketing plans. And best practice six is establishing priority redevelopment sites. And within certification, there is technical assistance match funding, and that is grants for certain RRC projects.
I've done a bit of research on electric vehicles or EVs. I'm just going to gloss over it a bit, because the supervisors interns are going to go into more detail. But as EVs rise in popularity, the township should consider making steps to incorporate EV charging stations and related infrastructure. There are three types of EVs. There are hybrid EVs, HEVs, plug-in hybrid EVs, FEVs, and battery EVs, BEVs. And FEVs, FEVs and BEVs are classified as plug-in EVs, or also known as PEVs. So there are also three types of chargers. There's the Level One chargers, which charge two to five miles per one hour of charging, typically used for overnight or residential parking. Level two is 10 to 20 miles per one hour of charging. It's best for public and workplace settings. And DC fast charging, or Level Three, is 60 to 80 miles per one hour of charging, and they're great for sites along heavy traffic areas. According to SEMCOG, about 0.59% of registered vehicles in Michigan are EV, making about 15,649 vehicles plug-in EVs. These numbers are increasing. There are estimated to be about 600,000 to 100- I mean, 1 million EV vehicles by 2030. So that would make up about 6% to 11% of Michigan vehicles.
Thank you very much. Lot of great news. Thank you. The next, we have Mark Loudon.
Madam Supervisor, can I just make a comment?
Oh, sure. Actually, that's a good idea. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Would you mind coming back up? We have some questions for you.
Great presentation, and I see you've done some great work this summer, all of you, and it's going to benefit the community. I hope working here has benefited you towards your careers. So congratulations on all you did. The one comment I wanted to make is the sidewalk committee, which ad hoc committee has been meeting. I've been attending those meetings. And I think it was Maggie, is that right, who did the sidewalks? Great name. That's my daughter's name as well. And it was really useful to have the work that you did, all of you, on the sidewalks, because we were really able to start discussions, and Patrick, you were there at the last one. We were really able to start discussions on, yes, there's 50 miles of sidewalk gaps in our community. I had no idea. It's something I've been talking about for nine years, but I had no idea how many, so thank you for that. It's really been helpful in the discussions. And there's going to be, in the coming year, a lot of sidewalk discussion amongst us. So I'm looking forward to having that. So thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you. Next, we have Mark Loudon and Erin McEger.
Hello. All right. It's working. Hi. So this is our presentation about electric vehicle infrastructure in Canton. Next slide. So we are the interns from the supervisor's office. My name is Erin, and I'm about to pursue a Master of Public Administration from Eastern Michigan University. My favorite hobbies include salsa dancing, gardening, and juggling.
My name is Mark Loudon, and I recently graduated from the University of Michigan Dearborn with a degree in mechanical engineering. Some of my favorite hobbies are longboarding, playing guitar, and yo-yoing.
Any questions about hobbies, you can ask at the end. So I just wanted to go over some general benefits of electric vehicles. They're sustainable. They have 70% lower emissions than gas-powered vehicles, not including renewable energy. They have lower noise pollution. They're cost-effective. They save about $4,500 in maintenance over the cost, over the life of the vehicle. And they increase energy security, especially when they're paired with renewable energy. And we just have a quote here that shows that many consumers want to buy EVs, but one of the main barriers that they cite is a lack of adequate charging infrastructure that's holding them back.
Next slide, please.
So Ashley already spent some time talking about the different types of levels of EV charging. But one thing I'll go over real quick is just the different kinds of connectors. Generally, for Level One and Level Two, you have the standard J1772. But with DC fast chargers, you have three different connectors. There's CCS, ChaDeMo, and Tesla. And so Tesla is straightforward. Tesla cars use it. And then the CCS is usually North American manufacturers, and the ChaDeMo is mostly Asian manufacturers.
Next slide, please.
So just a little bit about the current state of EVs and market trends. So on the national level, in 2019, the PEVs were 2% of light-duty vehicle sales in the U.S. Last year in Michigan, there were about 15,000 EVs on the road, but this could increase to around 600,000 to 1 million by 2030. And on the local level, as of last year, there were 767 EVs in Canton. And also, some of the, or many of the major manufacturers, including General Motors, Ford, Stellantis, they've committed to changing or converting to EV sales very soon. GM has committed by 2035 to do a complete transition. So it's happening faster than many of us thought. And these are a few incentives and rebates that are available for EV chargers. DTE provides $500 per charger for residential customers and $2,500 for business customers. So Canton would be eligible for that if Canton were to buy its own chargers. Eagle also has a program for Level Three chargers, but that isn't relevant in Canton at the moment, because there are no eligible locations. And there are some fleet incentive programs that are coming soon from the state of Michigan and DTE.
So in addition to all this, we also spent some time looking at where the ideal locations for chargers would be in Canton. And so one of the quotes we have is, as much as 85% of charging happens at home usually, but there are still gaps that need to be filled, mostly at multi-residential housing and hotels, where people are either spending overnights and they need their car charged. So the tricky thing is how can Canton support that? And so we also looked at public buildings, park and recreations, places, especially in this area of Heritage Park. You have the Summit Library, these softball fields. They're good locations for people who are just needing to spend time charging their vehicle. It can take up to four to five hours to charge a vehicle. So providing this option for people who otherwise couldn't have an EV charger just opens up the accessibility to owning an EV. And so we also spent some time comparing what other municipalities are doing. And this is just a graph to give some general information. And the big takeaway is that Ann Arbor, Ferndale, and Grand Rapids, what they're doing is they are strategically placing their chargers where they can charge for parking. So you park and you give them a fee, and then you can basically charge your vehicle for free. Next slide, please. So but Westland and Northville, what they're doing is they're partnering with companies and splitting revenue made from the machines themselves, which is what we're going to recommend Canton does. So just an overview, Westland is working with a New Jersey-based company called Greenspot and is receiving 5% of the revenue, while Northville is working with a Detroit-based company called Hague Automotive and receiving 10% of the revenue.
So another thing we did was compare zoning ordinances in Michigan. 27 zoning ordinances mention EVs in Michigan, and four cities actually require EV infrastructure and new developments. This is just some terminology. EV ready refers to just having the conduit laid for a charger. And EV installed means having an actual charger installed with the conduit. So some examples are Grand Rapids and Ann Arbor. Grand Rapids has less stringent requirements. It's basically one EV space per 200 parking spaces. Ann Arbor has much more strict requirements. I'll talk more about that in a second. Some other cities also recommend rather than require EV infrastructure. Roseville is one of those. And then a final thing is that some cities have chosen to allow EV spaces to count as multiple regular parking spaces in their minimum parking requirements, which is a great idea to incentivize placing the chargers and lowers the cost for developers. So more about Ann Arbor here. So as I said, it's a pretty strict ordinance. Generally requires about 10% of parking to be EV installed with a charger and around 10% to 25% to be EV-capable, which is similar to EV-ready. And in July, a Catholic church was expanding their parking lot and appealed this ordinance, because it would have been extremely expensive. They would have had to install a lot of chargers. And they won the appeal and reduced the number to about 10 spaces with EV infrastructure. So this is just something to consider if Canton were to do something like this, that there could be pushback. So here are some recommendations.
So some of the first steps that Canton has already begun taken is they've already issued an RFP to basically choose a vendor, similar to what Westline and Canton are doing. And vendors will be submitting their bids, and they're going to be looking to negotiate with these different vendors. Also, in the works is an application for a SEMCOG grant that would help pay for the surveying costs, so it wouldn't be any extra cost to the citizens. And then finally, a technology committee is being formed by the township supervisor, Anne Marie. And they're basically going to continue this effort in trying to implement EV chargers in Canton.
So one long-term goal that Canton could consider would be to update their zoning ordinance, importantly, allow Level Two and Level Three chargers in all zones with some stipulations. And there's a lot of information on this in our notes that we shared. So another thing Canton could consider would be to establish infrastructure requirements. I have a table here that has some percentages that I thought would be feasible here, because they're not so strict, like places like Ann Arbor, but they still incentivize and kind of push for the infrastructure. And they place a priority on multifamily homes and hotels, because that's where it'll be most needed. And then Canton could also consider playing around with the parking minimums to include, to incentivize EV spaces. And also, site design, or some site design requirements would be good to include, like trip hazards, protective bollards, signage. And there, like I said, there's a lot more information in the notes. There was really too much to write on one slide.
Next slide, please. And so here we just have some examples of a parking space that consumers energy. As you can see, they've clearly designated this spot as EV parking only. It has green paint. It's got bollards. It even has a signage. And to the right of that picture, just different examples of signs that we've seen all over. Right now, there's not one regulatory sign, like a handicap sign, for instance. But generally, what's recommended is having some kind of symbol that will basically communicate to a potential EV driver that this is a spot for them and will communicate to non-EV drivers that they are not allowed to park in the space. And so part of the long-term goal is we've developed a list of places that we think are best suited for Canton. I mentioned earlier, this whole area, which includes the administration building, the library lot, the summit. There's even a splash park. And even the village cultural area where they have the theater, it could become a good walking area for consumers. And then the Canton Sports Center is also just a highly foot-traffic area, lots of parking space available. And right now, already, the conduit is laid down for Canton Fire Station Two. And so as you can see, it's got the necessarily bollards, but it doesn't have a sign yet. It doesn't have parking to distinguish it. But it's basically in the preemptive zone of having a charger installed there. And here is just a map of these locations. Very hard to read from the slide, so we won't go too into detail. But all that is, is just high and low priorities of the locations I already listed off.
Another long-term goal would be to electrify the township fleets, which is already in process with the seven hybrids that Canton ordered. But this is a cost-effective step. It makes a public image for EVs. And there are lots of resources available, including a couple rebate or grant programs coming soon that could be utilized. And just finally, a couple other- oh, next slide. A couple other ideas that Canton could consider would be streamlining the permitting process for EV chargers. This could be as simple as a checklist or YouTube video, reduced fees or expedited review. And then education and outreach is also extremely important, especially for developers, because this is a fast transition, and for them to understand why it's important to include this infrastructure. A rebate program for multi-unit developments could be considered. There's information in our notes. There's an example from Columbus, Ohio, that you all can look at if you want. And then finally, creating a sustainability and climate action, or climate action plan would create a backdrop for all of this sustainability work and set a good direction for Canton in general. And that's all.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Hi. Thank you so much for the presentation from all of the interns so far, and I'm sure the next one will be great, too. But I'm actually an EV driver. I've driven one now for almost two years. And I was just wondering, on the slide that you had about the state and local incentive programs, what is disqualifying Canton from the Charge Up Michigan program? You said there were no eligible locations or something?
Yeah, that program is for Level Three chargers only, the fast chargers. So, and they actually picked out, they did a study, and they picked out specific locations in Michigan where the chargers could be placed. So there is one location in Michigan. It's on Ford, or sorry, in Canton. It's on Ford Road. And it's already spoken for. I think it's a BP station. So they've already gotten the funding. And as of now, they, there are no other locations in Canton that, so basically, Canton can't apply.
Okay. All right. Thank you for explaining that.
Anyone? Tanya?
Thank you so much for the presentation. This is a cause very close to my heart. I have a question about, you know, have you done any research on how we can encourage, like, local businesses, especially IKEA being our high-traffic? You know, a lot of people come every day to IKEA parking lot and how, I think there might be some charging stations there, but how do we encourage local businesses, even hotels that already are built to have an EV charging station? Are, you know, is at the state level, are they giving some incentives? How can we encourage them?
Yeah, I think the DTE program definitely helps, because they would qualify for that $2,500 rebate. But also, and I think on the last slide, I mentioned, like, any expedited, yeah, expediting the permitting process. Just any way you can make it easier for businesses to do this. Yeah, lowering the fee or just creating a process that's really straightforward or education and outreach, helping them, just giving them the tools to do it is what's going to make a difference there, because obviously, Canton can't really force anyone to install a charger. So it's just making the process as easy as possible.
We also included the idea of, like, for any new development for businesses, having EV charger parking spaces count for either more or less, depending on how many they want.
Yeah. And that would be for new development, mostly, like, if they want to expand, but that's also really helpful, yeah.
Questions?
I have a quick question and a comment. Thank you very much for the presentation. I thought it was excellent. Trustee Snyderman, Supervisor Graham Hudak, and I participated in interviews for folks interested in participating on the Technology Committee. And there is a lot of excitement and energy around these issues of technology and sustainable in our community. Is this something, this presentation, something that the committee members will be able to have access to or be able to see some of the notes that have been put together?
Definitely. We actually created a SharePoint just for that, and they put a lot of information in. And all the interns will put information in that SharePoint. So you was, the board can see that, and the Technology Committee, yes, thank, good question.
Thank you.
Have a lot of notes.
Well, judging by the people that we interviewed, I'm sure that they will, they will definitely love to take a look at it.
Madam Supervisor?
Uh huh.
Okay. How would- How would the trustees access that SharePoint?
I believe they already have their name on it. Is that, we just have to send the link? Is that correct?
Yeah, I set it up with IT. I think you should have access, but I can check.
Yeah, we'll have to send them the link. We can do that.
Yeah, we'll check.
It's also a folder in the supervisor's drive, isn't it?
Yeah, that's the SharePoint, yeah.
Okay.
And electric vehicle infrastructure, I think.
Make sure you have that link. All right. Thank you very much. Good job. Our last group, we have one person virtual and one person here. So from our engineering group, Kyle Petruski and Andrew Houston. Andrew, I believe, is virtual.
Afternoon, everybody. I'm Kyle Petruski. And yeah, I'll be joined by Andrew Houston via Zoom. Andrew, you there?
Do we have to promote him up here?
Permission to talk?
I don't see anybody by that name as an attendee. Oh, there we go. There. Sorry, Andrew. I'm going to promote him to panelist.
Talk? All right, I'll just get into it. So I'm going to do a little end-of-summer presentation about our internship here at the township. So a little overview first. We're going to start out with some introductions of Andrew and myself, then we'll move on to our in-the-office and out-of-office experiences from this internship and some of the lessons and takeaways we learned from all the things that we have done throughout the summer. And then from there, we'll go to questions.
Good evening, everybody. A quick test. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
All righty. My name is Andrew Houston. I am currently studying general engineering at Michigan Tech, and that is where I am right now. I'm up in Houghton. I really enjoy being outside and keeping active. That's some of my hobbies. I also like to go fishing, and in the future, I hope to work on some large-scale civil engineering projects.
Once again, I'm Kyle Petruski. I am studying at Wayne State University, going into my senior year, and my major is civil engineering. In my free time, I like to play sports, volleyball, basketball with my friends, and fishing as well. And one of my, one of the things I aspire to do is a major project, like a bridge or something in the future. All right, moving on. We'll touch on the in-office experiences. So a lot of the in-office things that we did revolved around research, organization, and presentation of information. One of the first major projects we did was the EV charging stations, which you saw the previous interns kind of took the reins on that. We did a little bit of overview on the whole thing, industry leaders, some of the other chargers, and then passed it on to them and let them take the reins on it. The next thing we touched on was I-275 crossings. We did an analysis of all of the bridges that are crossing over I-275 in Canton, mainly looking at the pedestrian crossings, looking at the residents around it, pedestrian traffic, some of the businesses, whether they would need to have access there, and seeing whether it warrants a, either a better pedestrian crossing or one at all. Next, we touched on some of the sidewalk repair programs. This was mostly inputting information from previous sidewalk repair into the system. It was all mostly in paper, and that's not ideal to look back on to if a resident comes up and wants to look into their property. So we put that, the majority of the 2019 sidewalk crossing into the system. And then beyond that, we did some other malicious requests. We looked at the sanitary systems and the water mains all along the main roads in Canton, and we compiled them all onto this big map here. You can see it's in the corner. They're kind of hard to see, but that has all the file names of the water main blueprints and sanitary system blueprints. So if a engineer needs to quickly get access to a blueprint, they can do that from that fairly easily. And then I included the drive thing on there, so you can, anybody who wants to use that, feel free to. All right, on to the next one. So the out-of-office experiences. This we, so firstly, we went out and looked at some of the sidewalk repair programs with fellow engineer Matt. He had us look over and measure and see exactly what is wrong with some of the sidewalks, see some of the standards for residential and industrial areas, got a good idea of what goes into the sidewalk repair program. Next, we also looked at some of the construction processes, went out into the field and saw how some of the residential developments happen. We got to see, which is one of me and Andrew's favorite things, we got to see them put a little drone down into one of these sanitary sewer systems and see exactly what's through there. It's not as big as you might think. It's not like in the movies. All right, on to the next one. So from some of those big projects and other small things, we did, some of the major takeaways we took from this internship over the summer is we got a better sight into an engineer's day-to-day work, exactly what they do, some of the smaller things that goes into the job of an engineer. We got a more in-depth process, or a more in-depth look into the process of a public project, the bidding, all the paperwork that goes into it, the contracting, maintenance, all the moving parts that are involved in a public project. We also got some experience reading engineering plans and documents, blueprints especially. Those can be very intimidating at first glance, so we got to sit down and really learn what those entail. And we got some real insight in the needs of maintaining a township. It's a lot of work. We got to see exactly all of the small things that pop up that the engineers need to take care of on a day-to-day basis, so that was good for us to see. All right, on to the next Q and A. So now we'll just open it up for questions, if anybody has questions for me and Andrew.
A comment. I love that map with the, where you can click and get the file for the blueprints. I think that's awesome. I can imagine that that is very helpful, so thank you for that, and thank you for all the work you did, and thank all of you interns. This is great. Thank you.
The questions? Tanya?
I have a question about your experience. Have you interned before in any other organization?
My freshman year, I did an internship at Michigan CAT. This was definitely a better experience. That internship was a little more geared towards sales, kind of. It was my freshman year, so I was just trying to get some experiences, you know.
I just wanted to know how your experience was being an engineer myself.
Yeah, me and Andrew really enjoyed the summer. I think he had an internship as well prior to this, and he said this was one of his favorites as well.
Good answer, good answer. So on your I-275 crossings, what did you learn there? What kind of work did you do?
I should have included, we made a memo for our higher-up to look over and make the final decision on, but I think we summarized that the crossing on Copernic could use a pedestrian crossing, and Cherry Hill could use a pedestrian crossing, too, because that's just kind of a little goat path there that people walk across the bridge.
Any of the drainage, what did you learn about your drainage projects, the map you had?
Drainage projects?
So you want to put, can you flip forward or backward, sorry? Let me see. I'm sorry, the...
Sidewalk repair?
No, the marking map for, one more backwards. Where you marked the maps. What did you mark on those maps?
Oh, this was, so this, we did this because the previous system, before looking into all the blueprints for the water mains and sewer or sanitary systems, was very convoluted. Either it was the files were named decently well, or they were random characters. So we just made the file names a little better, and we found them, marked them on that map, color-coded them, and then we scanned that into the system, and you can just click on that and zoom on to where you want to look at, kind of like how City Works is. And you can just easily find the file name for it, then go into the engineering where all of those blueprints are and just go right to it, or just type it into the system.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? No? Well, thank you very much for your presentation.
Have a good one.
Would someone mind taking a picture of the group of the interns together so we can let all the other employees see? If you guys wouldn't mind standing in a group, come on up here, actually, come up here. Show proof that you were here presenting, presenting to the board and the public. Yeah, you want to go up here in front of the flag? You have to leave them on, sorry. We have your pictures, though. We have your pictures. Thanks, Greg. We do have one remote, so don't worry. We'll put your picture on also. We'll get you, Andrew. Thank you very much for your, thank you for all your hard work and good luck in your classes this summer.
Photoshop Andrew into that photo.
Yes. Good job. Great, thank you. Our next presentation is Director Wendy Trumbull. She's going to be talking about the American Rescue Plan Act.
Did it start sharing the, why isn't it going from the, there it goes. Okay, very good. Okay, the moment you guys have been waiting for. I have to pull this down a little bit so I can see without my glasses fogging up.
I know, they fog up, don't they?
So back in March, we were awarded, as you're all aware, you know, most of the entitlement communities, at least in Michigan, were awarded money from the federal government in response to the COVID, in order to help, you know, losses of revenue, if you will, that communities received or were impacted by over the last year and a half or so. So in Canton, we were awarded $9.2 million, just shy of $9.2 million of this. So, you know, back in May, the federal government issued the guidance, so it was initially awarded in March. They had 60 days to give us the guidance. They gave us what they called the interim final guidance, so it's not final guidance. And they gave us, it was about 150 pages of rules that you had to abide by. And at the end of each of the individual sections, it talked about, it talked about, it had a number of questions. So it would say, here's, here's some things that you could spend this on, but then it would say, ask questions, well, what do you think about this? Or how long do you think we should allow governments to spend with these, in these sorts of categories? And they wanted all the questions answered, responses by July 10th, I think it was July 10th, July 16th, somewhere in that timeframe. And since that time, they still have not issued their final guidance yet and answers on this. So this is, right now, I'm going to talk about what we know today. We don't necessarily have all the answers to all the questions yet, but we can give you the big highlights of what the, you know, the general rules are surrounding these grand dollars. So what we do know at this point in time is that the eligible use of the funds really fall into four categories. It can support public health expenditures. Those were also broken down into two subcategories. It can be responding to COVID-19 directly, or it can address negative economic impacts caused by this health emergency. The second big category is to replace the public sector lost revenue. The third is to provide premium pay for essential workers, and the fourth was to invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So I'm going to go into each of those in a little bit more detail. So the first category was to support the public health expenditures. And again, this is the one that was broken into the two major subcategories. So the first one is to focus on the funding of COVID-19 mitigation efforts. It can include medical expenses, behavioral health care, and certain public health and safety staff. So in the interim final guidance, I know one of the things that we've talked about quite a bit was behavioral health care. So it does state that behavioral health care includes mental health treatment, substance abuse, or substance misuse treatment, and other behavioral health services, crisis intervention, overdose prevention, and that's just to name a few of them. So one of the things that we've talked about is the social workers and, you know, supporting mental health. That would be an eligible expense under this. For how long? It doesn't state in the guidance, you know? You could pay for that for a year if it goes through 2024. It doesn't, it doesn't really state how long we can support that. At this point in time, that guidance hasn't been issued yet, but it is an eligible cost that we can support to pay. The other piece of it, of this category, the second subcategory, is the economic harm to workers, households, small businesses, impacted industries, and the public sector. So the small businesses also includes not-for-profits. So not, supporting not-for-profits falls under this category. So when I reference the FAQ, and I can send out links to these for all, for you guys to actually read if you want to see the more specific, I think the, I think the FAQs is 25, I can't remember, it was 25 or 42 pages of FAQs. It's much shorter than 150, but they do give some more specific, specific answer, more specific questions. So this states the following, that for assistance to the small businesses, it may be provided to the small businesses, including loans, grants, in-kind assistance, technical assistance, or other services to respond to the negative impacts of COVID. But it does state that recipients must design a program that responds to the negative economic impacts of COVID-19, including identifying how the program addresses the identified need faced by the small business. So further, there's really no definition, solid definition of what equals a small business, but they do give some guidance in this other FAQ. It's targeted, we can consider additional criteria to target businesses, but one of the items that it references to is looking at the Small Business Administration. They give a definition of what small businesses are. I don't have that definition off the top of my head, but something similar that was used for the Paycheck Protection Program. So small businesses were allowed to apply for certain other grants. So we would probably recommend following a similar program to how those programs were also initiated. Small businesses were also allowed to apply for grants through this ARPA grant, through the federal government directly. This is basically just allowing Canton to also adopt those measures as well. So I forgot to say Mike Shepherd, who has been, from finance, who has been integral in helping come up with this program and, you know, identify this is here. So we've been doing a lot of research, he's been doing a lot more research, trying to look to what this would mean, but there, again, has not been final guidance or final direction to really know how we would move forward with giving grants of this sort yet, but we're working on it. The second major category here is to replace public sector lost revenue. So Canton Township's lost revenue calculation for 2020, and I put a little asterisk here because we still have a little bit of a question mark on one piece of it, is $5.6 million at a minimum. It might jump up to over $6 million if we can get some clarification from our auditors of one piece of the revenue that we're not sure if we can include or exclude yet. So it's interesting because the lost revenue calculation excludes certain revenues, includes certain revenues, so it excludes, you can't include your water revenue. That is excluded from this funding calculation, but you include your sewer revenue. So there's certain things that, you know, that you, that don't really make common sense on why you would include one and not the other. You also exclude your federal grants. So if we already got, for example, we got a couple million dollars already from the state of Michigan last year, and, well, yeah, in 2020, for the payroll costs for May, we got about $2 million for that. We exclude all that, so we can also say, we don't include that as a revenue that we received in 2020. We exclude that, so almost kind of double counting some of that. It doesn't actually look at our, where we ended up, where our bottom line was, is just looking at our revenue. So even though we made some measures to cut our expenses when we thought our revenues were going to go down significantly, it doesn't look at, look at the bottom line, it just looks at the revenue. The good news about that is that we have significant flexibility on how we spend under this category of, of the section of the grant. So it basically gives us the, let's see, at the very bottom of the, sorry, I was highlighting what we could spend it on here. They gave several examples, which you could spend it on, including infrastructure, which would be like roads, modernization of cybersecurity, including hardware, health services, environmental remediation. Basically, we have a lot of Basically, we have a lot of flexibility on how we spend this money, sidewalk gaps. You name it, we probably can spend it under this category, as long as it's a government service. Like I said, we're still waiting to hear back about the court revenue, so the court revenue in most communities runs through communities' general funds. The 35th District Court is kind of lost out here in limbo because they aren't qualified to receive their own. They're qualified to receive it through us, but under this definition, it doesn't address how we count their revenue. Where if, if we were like any other municipality, the district courts go right through the general funds, and we could count that as lost revenue. So we're trying to talk to the auditors to see from a common sense perspective, can they buy off on that from our audit to say that we can count that as our lost revenue. I should further say that this lost revenue counts for 2021 as well. I fully expect that we will have more lost revenue for '21, based on the way the funding, the formula works. So you started out with our 2019 revenue, and you add it by 4.1%, and then you add that again by 4.1%. So, we are likely going to finish under again this year and be able to make it for our whole grant. The whole $9.2 million could probably fall in this category, but we won't know that for sure until we're at the end of '21. So, there's a couple things that, that they talk about, you cannot spend it on, and you can't just use it to build up your reserves, so they don't want you to put it right into your fund balance and just use it for anything. You cannot use it to pay down your unfunded pension. However, it can be used to pay for unfunded OPAP costs, or unfunded retiree healthcare. I don't know why they said we could do one and not the other, but under the FAQs, they were very specific to say you could do it for one, should the board choose to do that. The third category talks about providing premium pay for essential workers. Basically, who, you know, who was here and who was required to be here because of the health, because of the pandemic. So it specifically talks about the sanitation workers, and it talks about public health and safety. So our DPW workers probably would fall under this category, and obviously our police and fire personnel as well. However, we are somewhat limited, because it states, if you see the bottom paragraph, and I'll provide this presentation to the, to the board as well. Premium pay that would increase a worker's total pay above 150% of the greater of the state or county's average annual wage requires specific justification for how it responds to the needs. So, likely if we were to give premium, it's, our workers would probably be 150% of the annual, already of the, of the base pay of the community. So we'd probably somewhat limited here to be able to use these funds for that. Lastly, the fourth category was to invest in the water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Water and sewer is pretty, you know, self-explanatory. The broadband's a little bit more defined. Basically, you have to, the scope of the project would have to be to reliably deliver minimum speeds of 100 megabits per second download and 100 megabits per second upload. And it has to be targeted in an unserved or underserved community, household, and business. And that definition is basically that people are not able to access speeds that delivers 25 megabits per second download and 3 megabits per second upload speed. So if our entire community has that ability, and I don't know if they do, we would be limited in what we could do for the broadband under this definition. However, if we do have areas that are, that are lacking, we can build, it can benefit anybody along the route. It just has to be served to help those individuals get that type of service. So, a couple weeks ago, I think it was about 10 days ago, Wayne County called a meeting to talk about Wayne County's needs and was looking for some community input on what the communities would like to spend money on. And they were looking for it to go to their commission. They, they had this meeting at 2:30 on a Friday, I think, 2:30 to 3:30 on a Friday, and they said, we need all of your ideas by next Friday submitted. We had no meeting, we had no preparation, so Supervisor and myself called the three full-time electives together and the directors together and said, we need some ideas quickly to submit to the, this is really small, isn't it? I'll read them off to you, but we needed some ideas really quick to submit to the county for some ideas for them. Since this is really small, I'll read these to you. I'm sorry, I didn't know it'd come across that small. We added Canton Center Road. You know, that's a county and township project, so we, we submitted for that road for $7 million. We submitted $2 million for the sidewalk gap programs. Drainage infrastructure, we put in $10 million. You know, we've talked about for a couple years now the Salts Ridge and Denton intersection being really dangerous. The county already has plans for a roundabout, but they said they had no funding, so now we said, you have funding. So we suggested they use some of this for that. You know, on a, you know, wish, we said, what if we were to do a drive-up window to have a touchless, you know, if people wanted to pay the treasurer's office? We don't think we'd have enough plans to try to get that done, but if we could get the design, you know, why not ask for it? Fire station number four, we know that that's going to serve the southern part of the community, which is a lower-income area, so that can, you know, these funds could be utilized for that. An IT disaster recovery plan, we put in for $1 million. The treasurer's office requested a metal door for their vaults. The parking lot out back needs to be repaved and added security to that. We know that project is coming in at $1.7 million, so we asked for that. An encrypted email solution, which can benefit the whole township, but really help the police department, working with the courts, to get information back and forth. We submitted for the social worker. A barrier project for the, for the windows, the treasurer's office windows and public customer-facing windows, we asked for that. Nankin Transportation, we said, what could we help, what more could we get from Nankin to help our users of that transportation system? And they said, besides a, I think there, besides a bus washing system, they said to get some people costs to get more drivers. If they get more drivers, they could help more people. So we put in for $360,000 for that. A pocket park for Fire Station 2, and then a high-demand mail processing unit, which can help with the elections and get some of the ballots out more quickly.
Wayne County has $339 million to distribute amongst the 43 counties.
Correct.
Communities, right, sorry.
Correct. And, you know, we have no indication from the county. I think they said they're going to meet with their commission in September. So we'll hear word back from them. My guess is they already have an idea of what they want to spend their money on, but hopefully, if, you know, these overlap, maybe that'll help give support to the commission to enforce those. And we already have a good list started, I guess, once we hear word from them on what the, what our township board, what you all would like to see, potentially the money spent on as well, once we know what the county has or has not accepted. So really, the next steps. Our first quarterly report is due on August 31st. What we must do is report our lost revenue for 2020. So again, we're still waiting on that one piece of information, but we'll get that report in by the end of the month. We would also have to report if we spent any of these dollars through July 31st, which we have not. So we just are reporting our lost revenue. We need to wait for the final guidance to be released, at least some questions, answers to some of the questions, the big questions. The plan is to have a follow-up study session with the board to talk about what the final, you know, hearing from the board and getting an input on what the township priorities are from the board's perspective, to try to start to develop a plan and finalize a plan for this. We need to calculate the 2021 lost revenue in early '22. And then, again, we'll have a follow-up study session after that with the board. After that, 2021 lost revenue has been determined, just to kind of finalize where we think we're going to go. It's important to know that we have till 2024 to obligate these funds, and then 2026 to spend them. So we have, you know, five years to spend this money. Really, the guidance I've sat in on, I've probably sat in on seven webinars so far, and one of the things, the recurring themes is, don't obligate the money quite yet. The final guidance has not been issued. So think about what you want to do. If you look at anything from the CARES Act, the final guidance was constantly changing in what you could and couldn't spend the money on. So the recommendations are really to hold off a little bit longer to get some of this final guidance and see, see where the treasury ends up with, with the final, final guidance on this. So, we have, we have some time, but we also want to start to have somewhat of a plan, so we know what we want to do. So, we haven't, Supervisor and I haven't talked about the timing of the next study session yet to sit down with the board, but we certainly can, can talk about that to figure out what the appropriate timing for that would be. I would have expected the treasury to release some updated guidance. They updated their frequently asked questions on July 19th, which was three days after the questions were due, but they haven't issued anything since that date yet. So I would expect something within the next few weeks. I mean, I would, I would hope they would issue something. You haven't heard anything further, yeah. So we have not heard anything further on that. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions, public questions? Okay, on the board. Stephen?
Thanks, Director Trumbull. So, is the dollar amount set?
The $9.2 million is definitely set.
That's set, so we know that, okay.
Yeah, we know we already said that.
All right, and, yeah, I mean, a lot of things up in the air, so thanks for letting us know. Interesting that, not water, but sewer. And, but, the question I had was on the broadband. I'm not sure where I would prioritize it, and I'm not sure if there's going to be any money available even after you calculate our losses for 2021. But I'd be interested to know if that money could be worked, we could use that money to work with the broadband providers, and maybe they would leverage it, match it, or something like that, where they, we could. And again, like you said, I don't know if we have any gaps in our community for broadband, but if we did, if, if they could leverage our dollars, that might be interesting to talk to them about.
So to answer your question, we definitely would need to work with the, with the providers, because if they're not going to give the, bring the service to the residents, then, you know, then we're installing it without, you know, an end user. But I think the, the providers of the service absolutely would hope to partner with us if we have this pot of money and can help build the infrastructure, you know, build the infrastructure, and they will come, right? So I would, I would definitely think that if we have an area that's underserved, they would jump at the opportunity if we contacted some of them to say, work with us, you know, to put an RFP, we're looking to expand the broadband, you know, under this last mile, or whatever the case might be, asking the providers to, you know, respond to it, to see if they would provide the services or commit to provide.
Because we, as a government, have never funded that, have we? No, okay. So if there's the opportunity for them to do it and have some governmental money to accelerate it, then maybe they'd be willing to work with us that way.
Correct, and if you read the, read it, what, what the goal is with the broadband is, there was a definite need that was identified through the pandemic, that there were certain communities and certain areas where children and families didn't have access to the broadband to be able to work from home. You know, we could probably work with the school district to find out if there was areas, you know, in our, you know, in our community, that they could say, yeah, this area could not access it. You know, that might be, you know, a way to find out if there was a general area, or was it a general, you know, household that couldn't afford it, or was it a whole community, you know, that didn't have access to it.
Neighborhood, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Semcog has a good map also that shows, you can zoom in on Canton, and you can see that they have different colors for the different strengths all over Canton. But they're also, we told them we were interested in this because of Ford Road also. What kind of broadband can we put in there while we have everything torn up?
Oh, yeah.
And so there's, they're having a meeting with us. I can invite you to it if you want to.
Who's having a meeting?
With M.Dot. M.Dot sent us, yeah, we asked them to, and they sent us a meeting notice.
I'm sure, and the Technology Committee be involved in that at all?
Sure, yes, yes. We invite them. Anyone else?
I had a quick question from Wendy. Thank you for the presentation. So you talked about mental health services. Is this for the entire community, or is this for the employees? How was the directive for that, that the money could be spent on, you know, behavioral health issues, and you said something about mental health, we can spend the money on that. So is it just the employees of the government, or is it the whole township?
It could, it could be individuals of the township that would have the need for behavioral health care. There's, there is, I'd have to verify the language, so shake your head, Mike, if I'm going to misspeak. But I'm pretty sure the language is, there's an automatic presumption that if somebody needed some assistance from the healthcare perspective, it is assumed to have been related to COVID at this, at this point in time, because of the pandemic. So whether somebody had a pre-existing condition or not at this point in time, you know, if the board wanted to say we were going to fund, I don't know, we wanted to give some of this money to Growth Works to help pay for some of the services for the mental health for people who needs it during this point in time.
Yeah, that is what I was thinking, partnering with Growth Works. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're right, partnering definitely makes the money go further also. Summer, did you have something?
No, just a comment. Thank you very much for digging into this. I know it's a lot. I can't wait till we get a little bit more clarity so we can figure out how we're going to invest this money in the community. I think the list that you and the directors and the full-time electives pulled together showed there are different, definitely great ideas out there. And I know that there are some things that are in our strategic plan that could, that may fit into some of these categories as well. So looking for, looking forward to a study session and digging into it a little bit more. But yeah, I think I would like to read those FAQs, so could you please send them?
I absolutely, I'll email those along.
So, I'm basically just diddooing Summer here, that I would like to delve in a little deeper with the FAQs and also appreciate the work that was put into this, and also the work that the full-time electives and you, everyone else, all the directors, put into, to this, because I think that some of the things that are on the list are really important, and as Summer said, do fit into our strategic, strategic goals.
Stephen?
I did have one more question, which was, you mentioned support for small businesses. And through, was it PPP, there, there was great support, I thought. I know some of the nonprofits I've worked with were able to take advantage of that to stay afloat. Have you guys heard, have businesses been calling to say that they weren't able to get PPP money and wanted to know if they could get some support through the township, through this?
They have not contacted the Finance Department.
Yeah, some of them spoke to me about it and asking about some of these funds. And one of the things that's interesting that Wendy talked about is how can we target? So let's say we do do something, so can we say, okay, you have to use it to give raises, wages, you know, to your employees, or maybe target outdoor dining. You can use it to create outdoor dining or something like that, or something. So, and you can also utilize the funds, because I know one thing with grants is, as you know, Stephen, also, you have to administer them, right? So you have to do all the paperwork, report back to the government. And you could also utilize the funds to use a company to do that for you. The county actually did that for some of their grants.
Oh, okay.
So there's a lot of things that we're trying to find.
Yeah, I think that if, if we go down the route, if the board wants to go down the route of offering, you know, grants to the small businesses, we are, we will need to look into having a, getting some assistance from a company to help oversee those grants. We don't have enough of the staff power to ensure that the program's meeting the requirements of the grant, that they have to make sure that they're, they're following the grant rules. So we would need to hire a company to help with that, but you can utilize the grant dollars from the ARPA grant to help fund, to help fund that.
Thanks.
I have just a quick comment, and Mary, if we can get an update on when we hear back from Wayne County on what projects they want to help us with?
Definitely. They really stressed partnerships. That's what they wanted to see. So, but as you could see, a lot of our list, the list there was partnerships with Wayne County, you know, the roads, a big one.
And we did put on here that we would be willing to fund 25% just to show as a partnership on any of these programs.
Yes, because we're already covering the Wayne County part. Also, one of them, like the fire station, our fire station down in that area does, will be servicing probably Wayne and Westland, you know, so because we go on, we do do that mutual exchange. Summer?
This conversation just reminded me about the CARES Act funding that we got early, I guess it was earlier this year, last year. Can you send around an update on that funding to show if it's all spent, or how it's going with Wayne Metro?
Oh, yeah, the CDBG CARES Act, yes, yeah, sure, we sure can.
Well, one, I was just, I was glad that Wayne County brought us to the table to participate in this. Definitely wish we had a little bit more time, that deadline was pretty aggressive. We did come together with some pretty awesome projects. I was glad to see the high-demand mail processing unit for the clerk's office added to that list. I had initially hoped that I could get a mutual aid or an intergovernmental agreement between multiple communities for using that unit, because it would benefit a number of communities for the purposes of mailing out ballots. And it would turn what usually is about a four-day process into a six-hour process. And the overtime in the clerk's office could then be, could be, could be sent to, towards different tasks as opposed to manually stuffing 30,000 ballots. But we moved forward and put it on the list here for the county, knowing that we would, we would be willing to pay 25% if they were willing to pay 75%. And that idea, I, and I initially pitched the idea to the county clerk who took that to the Secretary of State, and they're very interested in that as a long-term model for communities to enter into, potentially into, in their local agreements to kind of run the processing of mail ballots, to make it like more cost-effective for smaller jurisdictions and to kind of save on our time as elections change. That was super cool. With regards to the overall plan itself, I think, I think the, the strategy of trying to absorb as much money as possible through lost revenue so that we have more, more, more autonomy in determining how we spend it on legitimate uses inside Canton Township in, in general, is a, is a, is a, it's an awesome strategy. I think it's, yeah, I mean, there's always strings attached to all money, and if we can kind of take it through the lost revenue angle, it, it just, it frees up, it just frees it up, and we don't have to worry about meeting the very strict requirements of the Act itself. We can really have a discussion internally about where we truly want to spend that money. So I like that because it empowers the, the residents and the board and the administration to, to lead the way in where that money gets spent as opposed to the federal government. I think it's, you know, for me, I like local is more local, the better, in general.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks for the presentation, thank you. Okay, our first item after this is the consent calendar. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, request for a resolution of local body of government to recognize EDF parent boosters as a nonprofit in the community for purposes of making an application for a charitable gaming license to the Bureau of State Lottery. Item C2, consider authorization of permit for 2021 township fireworks display. Item C3, consider approving payment of the 2021, 2022 licensing and support renewal for the priority dispatch system. Item C4, consider approving the annual licensing renewal of power DMS. Finally, item C5, consider the purchase of a one-year extended warranty for 800 megahertz radios.
Support.
Thank you, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Okay, motion passes. Okay, the next item is the general calendar. Item G1, consider approval of site plan for automobile wash establishment, quick pass car wash for Canton crossings.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution as presented. The approval of the site plan for Canton crossings automobile wash establishment. Whereas the project sponsor has requested site plan approval for an automobile wash establishment on the north side of Michigan Avenue between Canton Center Road and Old Canton Center Road, and whereas the planning commission reviewed the site plan for Canton Crossing car wash and voted seven to one, recommend approval of the site plan with conditions as the site plan is consistent with the approved special land use plan and meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance, now therefore be it resolved. Board trustees, the charter township of Canton, Michigan, is hereby approve the site plan for an automobile wash establishment on the tax parcel, subject pass, tax parcel as proposed in the plan documents, subject to the conditions recommended by the planning commission and all applicable state, county, and township requirements.
The board?
Thank you, the project sponsor proposes to construct a car wash on the east side of the vacant portion of the subject parcel. The site is located between Canton Center Road and Old Canton Center Road, just north of Michigan Avenue, which is north of 711 and Comerica Bank. The site is zone C3, regional commercial and automobile wash establishments are special land uses in the C3 zoning district, subject to section 6.02D of the zoning ordinance. The township board of trustees previously approved the special land use for the car wash on March 23rd, 2021. Although the plan shows multiple commercial buildings on the site, this site plan application is for the car wash use only. Therefore, the other buildings shown on the plan are illustrative only and will be considered on a future site plan review application. At its meeting on July 12th, 2021, the planning commission recommended approval of the site plan for the proposed car wash, subject to conditions. Do you want to add anything, Patrick?
I have nothing else to add to our report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Summer, did you want to add anything?
Um, no, um, this came before, the board before, I think, earlier this year, and I have nothing to add. I should say this project came before the board, right?
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? Nope, Stephen?
Thank you. So when reading the minutes from the planning commission, there was lots of talk about one-way signs, and I was wondering if anything had been changed or done after that discussion to the plan?
Yes, there has been, and what I can do is I can share my screen here, and I'll bring up on one of the plan sheets just to, just to illustrate, and I'll zoom into an area. The area that we were talking about was off of Old Canton Center Road. So on this plan sheet, north is actually left. So Old Canton Center Road here is at the top of the plan sheet. And when the future, if the, and when the future phases are built out farther on the west side of the site, traffic that enters from Old Canton Center Road will have to turn right going into the site. Otherwise, if they go left, they'll be going the wrong way down a one-way aisle. And so the planning commission had discussion in terms of what some of the best ways are to encourage incoming traffic to go right, as well as outbound traffic that's on the north side of the site, to make a left to go on to Old Canton Center Road instead of going southward the wrong way down the one-way aisle. Usually with the way the parking spaces are striped, that's an indication of where traffic flow goes, but we worked with the applicant and the planning commission on strategies to improve the one-way access and to indicate which way that drivers need to turn. So on this plan, this is just the signage plan, there's a series of signage in addition to the fire lane signs which are required. There's also a series of one-way signs and do not enter signs to let drivers know at various points where they need to turn and where they can't turn. The planning commission was satisfied with the signage overall, but wanted to work with staff on any additional strategies to improve that. Since the planning commission meeting, what we've done is the applicant has changed the plans to add some pavement markings, which I'll zoom in on the entrance. And so it's a little bit better indication, and it will be made part of the site plan. So if they ever stripe the lot or anything like that, they'll have to have these arrows that will direct inbound traffic and outbound traffic where and how they can use that drive. So those are the most significant changes since the planning commission meeting is to improve the signage on the site to direct traffic.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I, I noticed was a question of the arch on either end of the, on either end of the building, that they be consistent, and I think I saw that that was changed, but I want to, I wasn't sure exactly what I was reading about it. So if you can just confirm that that was also changed, yeah, on this?
Uh, yes, and as we see on the sheet here, there's the north elevation and the south elevation with the arches.
So originally, one of them was not an arch, is that what was discussed?
Correct, I think they had left that out inadvertently. And so if I go out here a little bit, there's the east elevation at the top that does show the arches at each end.
Okay, all right. I thought that looked like it was done, I just wanted to confirm that, otherwise it looks good.
Any other questions or comments?
No thoughts on having those, what they talked about pork chops in there? Is, is that like a divider that you put when you're entering, like, and some of the, what exactly is that?
It is a raised triangular piece of concrete, and I can zoom into the area. And sometimes we'll see them coming in and out of sites where it will be a triangular piece that is just outside the sidewalk within the road right of way, and it's to physically move traffic to go, to turn right in and to turn right out only. One of the, one of the problems with the pork chops is that a lot of times vehicles will drive over them anyway if they're not signed appropriately, and it's just a large raised chunk of concrete, and the snowplows hit it, large trucks will drive over it because they can't meet the radius requirements, and they don't always function as intended. So we had some discussion about that, but it's not really something we pursued at this location.
Okay, so you think the, the signs on the pavement and the do not enter signs should be enough for guiding the traffic?
We believe so, with similar sites that have one-way configurations between the signage and the physical orientation of the curb, we think it will direct traffic appropriately.
Um, I forgot I had one other question, which was, does this project complete sidewalks all around this property?
Uh, it does. I will zoom out here, currently there is sidewalk along Canton Center Road. So along the east side of Canton Center Road, there is existing sidewalk, which is the west side of this site. Additionally, along Old Canton Center Road, there is sidewalk just south of the side of the site where there's, it terminates and there's a gap. And so the site plan proposes to connect that sidewalk, starting on the south side of the site, which is the top right of the screen, and it will carry the sidewalk all the way north to the intersection of Canton Center Road and Old Canton Center Road, and will fill that gap along the entire east front edge of the lot.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, great, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Motion passes. Item G2, consider final approval of the Monarch Grove Plan Development District.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move that the board approve the following resolution, the approval of the final plan development district for Monarch Grove. Whereas project sponsor has requested final approval of a planned development district for Monarch Grove located at the southwest corner of Ford Road and Gorman Road, which is located between Beck Road and Canton Center Road, and whereas projects, the planning commission reviewed the final plan development plan and plan development agreement and voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the request as it meets the criteria for plan development and results in indefinite benefits to the community, now therefore be it resolved. Board trustees, the charter township of Canton, Michigan, is hereby approve the Monarch Grove final plan development district on the subject tax parcels listed as proposed in the planned development agreement and plan documents, subject to the requirements of Wayne County and MDOT being, being satisfied that PD agreement, plan development agreement addresses how the definite benefits will be completed to the satisfaction of the township attorney and township engineer, and that the building architecture meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance for 50% masonry.
The board?
Thank you, the applicant proposes a planned development district to construct the housing for the elderly use at the southwest corner of Ford Road and Gorman Road, located between Beck Road and Canton Center Road. The proposed housing for the elderly use consists of 225 units on 17.25 acres, which are proposed as follows. 53 units of independent living, 102 units of assisted living, 60 in phase one and 42 in phase two, 32 units of memory care, and 38 attached elderly cottages. Each planned development district is required to demonstrate the definite benefits to the community. While several benefits are noted in the application materials, the following definite benefits are the most consistent with section 27.04 of the zoning ordinance. Architectural design of the buildings, paving of Gorman Road to the site's entrance, including reconstruction of the approach to three lanes with dedicated right and left turn lanes from Gorman Road onto Ford Road, extending the sidewalk along the south side of Ford Road eastward about 620 feet to connect to the existing sidewalk in front of Bell Tire, adding northbound and southbound right turn lanes at the intersection of Canton Center Road and Ford Road to permit overlap phases for northbound and southbound right turns, maintaining over 25% of the site as open space and including outdoor recreation areas for residents of the development that will include pickleball and bocce. Preliminary approval of the planned development was granted by the township board of trustees on January 12th, 2021. Would you like to comment anymore, Patrick?
Um, I have no additional comments, we have a, a pretty comprehensive report, so I'll be happy to take any questions.
Summer, anything from, from you?
Um, I'll just say when the planning commission discussed this project, we talked a lot about the 50% requirement for brick, and we decided that we needed to be consistent and follow our ordinance and go with the 50% brick.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Kate?
Yeah, so I talked to Patrick about this earlier, but I was wondering about, on, let's see, I think it's page 72 of our packet, in the planning commission minutes. It talks about how the developer has paid $300,000 into the state's wetland mitigation fund to offset filling in some of the wetlands on the site. And so what I was wondering about, and Patrick did answer my question, but I thought some others might want to understand this also, but the wetlands that are, that will be mitigated or saved slash improved with that payment, will they be in Canton?
Uh, yeah, and that's a good question, and I, I don't believe they're in Canton necessarily. I think they're in a nearby watershed, and I had noted, or I noted that concerning question to the applicant, Mr. David Endress, who is an attendee in the audience. And if we want to promote him to, to either speak, he could address that question in more detail in terms of their process of going through the Eagle wetland mitigation process and what the requirements were.
In the webinar?
Yes, this is David Endress with Kirkwood Development, I hope I'm coming through clearly.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, what's, what's involved with this Eagle, the Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes and Energy, with the state of Michigan, has a program called Part 303 of their Wetland Protection Program, which provides a guideline for wetlands mitigation credits and how they're created, and, and there's several rules associated with that. This particular project in Canton falls into what's called the Ma-Mee Lake Plain Echo Region. And what that really means is- And what that really means is the state, working in concert with actually the EPA, defines certain regions where wetlands credits, mitigation credits can be purchased. And we've gone through a process with both EPA, Federal Fish and Wildlife, and Eagle. Eagle has been out to the site, inspected the Canton wetlands, and really determined it to be a very low quality. What this program allows us to do is replicate that area somewhere else within this echo region. And the result of that is really a higher quality wetlands of the exact same area that is recreated elsewhere within that same echo region. So we have engaged in, we will be engaging, if this project should be approved, with a wetlands banker that is registered with Eagle to purchase the mitigation credits. The wetlands that is being created is already built, inspected, and approved by the state. These, these wetland bankers sort of almost build these on spec. And we would essentially be, be purchasing credits within that program.
So I, I understand. I just, I guess I'm still concerned because I feel like loss of wetlands in Canton is, you know, that they should be replaced here in Canton if possible. And so I, that's just a concern for me. I understand that everything was done properly, and I appreciate that.
So Patrick, is that a possibility to put in a request like that? Do you know?
For this project, I'm not sure. But long-term, that is something that we could talk to the engineering division about and maybe talk to Eagle about to see how some of these wetland mitigation areas could potentially be qualified in Canton.
I'm sorry. I imagine it might be difficult for a township to permit some type of local wetland requirement. But are you familiar with any cities that might have a permitting process for local wetland? I understand the Eagle process is state law, and it's bigger than us. We have no power or say in any of that. But yeah, are you familiar with cities that might have any type of wetland permitting? I know, I imagine you would probably do it through soil erosion or something along those lines, or?
Yeah, many communities across Michigan, both Michigan, both cities and townships have wetland ordinances. In some cases, where there are smaller wetlands or minor, relatively minor wetlands, that the state does not regulate. Some local communities have adopted wetland ordinances to regulate wetlands that are not regulated by the state. So in cases like that, if there's a wetland regulated by the state, they would go to Eagle for permitting. But if there's a, a smaller wetland or a wetland that is otherwise not regulated by the state, some communities have adopted ordinances to regulate the wetlands, which can, can address mitigation, can address a process, an application process by which they would have to go through locally to impact a wetland that's not regulated by the state.
That would fall within either the zoning powers of the township or a different type of ordinance?
Correct. For local communities that do wetland ordinances, they would put them either in their zoning ordinance or as a separate ordinance in their code of ordinances.
Similar to like our tree replacement ordinance, right?
That's correct.
Currently under judicial review as we speak.
Yes. But wetland ordinances, as long as they occupy the area that's not covered by state law, they've been, they've been enforced throughout the state.
That could be a potential project for the next round of interns.
All our wetlands.
I agree. Stephen?
Thank you. Well, just a couple of questions. One comment, which I'm sure you probably, none of you are surprised at, but I am so happy that we're getting 600 feet of sidewalk connecting us to the Bell Tire complex. And, and I remember it was something we talked about at the last meeting on this. So I'm assuming that's contiguous, right?
That's, that's correct. It will go from Gorman Road east to where the sidewalk terminates in front of the Bell Tire.
We are now going to be 600 feet less than 50 miles of sidewalk gap. So that's great. The other questions that I had, oh, also, the other comment was, in reading this, I was happy to see that Mr. Endress and this organization has taken lessons from the pandemic and actually implemented some higher ceilings and a ventilation system that would be helpful in future situations like that. So I was pretty impressed in that. And then the other thing is, and Patrick, in looking at this, it looks like we're accepting quite a number of variances. It looked like there's six outlined here. Is that, do you have any concerns with the number of variances that we're accepting in this project?
Going, going one by one, it, it doesn't, it doesn't arise as a major concern. The first is the building length, where there's a length of 464 feet along the main building. And there's a maximum of 350 feet allowed. One of the, one of the architectural items that mitigates that is that there are a lot of angles in the building, so it's not one solid line of wall that's, that's a long, almost institutional-looking building. So there's enough relief and projection in the architecture where it doesn't appear like a much longer building. So in terms of the maximum building length, that's not a major concern. Plus, with multi-use facilities for a housing for the elderly, it would include independent living, dependent living, and elder care. And sometimes the length of the building is more necessary because you want to get from one end to the other without having to go outside to go to a different building. So sometimes a longer building is, is okay. The next one is, the second modification is the building height, where they're proposing 42 and a half feet where 35 feet is allowed. So there's a modification of seven and a half feet. And as you had noted, they have higher ceilings and they have more ductwork for ventilation. And the Planning Commission was satisfied with the building height, given how far from the lot lines that height would be, so that it wouldn't be that imposing on the neighbors. And it's still held at the maximum number of stories of three. The third request for relief was the masonry percentage, and the Planning Commission did not recommend approval of that modification. The Planning Commission recommended that it be 50% masonry. The next request was for wetland setbacks to be less than 25 feet proposed from any wetland that will remain. These are modifications that we typically support because the applicant will get a permit from the state to fill certain wetlands, which is at the jurisdiction of the state. But if there are wetlands remaining, oftentimes we've granted modifications to lower the setbacks. Otherwise, to achieve a 25-foot setback, it would encourage them filling in even more wetland, or there would just be a non-wetland setback. So in cases like this where wetlands are filled in, we frequently support a narrower setback to that existing wetland or remaining wetland as a way to encourage preserving as many wetlands as possible. The, the fifth and sixth modifications are the minimum side-to-rear and side-to-side building spacing. And those reduced setbacks impact only the internal buildings on the site. So we're not reducing the impacts on neighbors that live next door. It's between the proposed buildings within the site itself. And sometimes having closer buildings within a unified development is, is not impactful and actually helpful in order to get from one place to the other without expanding that travel distance.
Okay, you don't feel it's going to look too crowded, all the different style of buildings? Because it was pretty significant, if I remember, the reduction in side and front-to-back setbacks.
Yeah, for the side-to-rear, for a handful of the cottage units, it's proposed to be 24.2 feet, which is less than the 60 feet required. But the 60 feet is almost like a multifamily standard. And these cottages, a lot of them are one-story. They have high ceilings and high roof pitches. But with being, they basically have a look of single-family residential or single-family attached. And in some of our single-family attached districts in our products, the spacing distance is even narrower than that.
Really? Okay. All right, thank you.
Questions?
I just wanted to talk about the wetland setbacks for a moment. So I, I understand, and I thank you for explaining about why that's sometimes, you know, why the modification's sometimes made. But we could still require that, right? We could still require the 25-foot setback.
That's correct. A 25-foot setback could be required from a wetland. And the, the applicant would either, they would either have to adjust the location of the building to be 25 feet from the wetland, or in, depending on the type of wetland and the orientation of the layout, they may change their Eagle permit to fill in more wetland to be the 25 feet. I've seen that happen before, where somebody wants to avoid going to the zoning board of appeals for a variance, so they amend their Eagle permit just to, just to be that 25 feet.
Okay. Can you, can you explain why we have a 25-foot setback minimum?
Yeah, the 25-foot setback is to allow a buffer between a building or a structure to a wetland. So if there's runoff, if there's foot traffic, if there's any other activity that may impact a wetland, that 25 feet just allows for a buffer. And within that 25 feet, somebody can have a lawn, they can have a garden, they can, they can plant trees and shrubs and, and things like that. But they can't build structures, they can't have their house, they can't have decks. And in some cases, they may not even be able to grade within 25 feet of a wetland, because grading can also be impactful, both in the short term, the grading itself, and the long term by changing the pitch and elevation near the wetland.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'd like to call a vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
So we have five ayes and one nay. Okay, thank you. Item G3, consider approval for a purchase order for additional costs for the emergency underground line service repair at Heritage Park in May.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order to Utilities Instrumentation Services at 2290 Bishop Circle, East Dexter, Michigan, 4130, in the amount of $2,562.70 for the additional cost of repair of underground service lines at Heritage Park to be paid from the Community Improvement Fund listed.
On Friday, May 7, 2021, Facility Services was notified that the park's golf maintenance building was experiencing issues with their power. Upon investigation, Facility Services staff determined that two of the three legs were reading at 75%, and noticed that the COVID testing site was also experiencing power losses, issues. Corby, Corby Energy Services Incorporated, a preferred contractor who was on-site for the emergency generator or final inspection of Fire 1, was contacted immediately to investigate, where they confirmed that the power was being interrupted. Corby supplied generators to temporarily get the power back running, and then called Utilities Instrumentation Service to determine the cause of the issue. On May 26, 2021, Corby Energy and UIS each submitted an invoice for their services totaling $22,577.42, which was approved by the board on June 8, 2021, Agenda Item G5. Due to the urgency of this matter, a memo was sent to the supervisor and finance director requesting to waive the bidding process for the emergency repair. Upon their approval, the purchase orders were submitted. The emergency repairs were made, however, the repair costs came in over the initial estimate by $2,562.70 for fuses that were necessary, and had not been billed by UIS at the time of their initial invoicing. Let's see. I don't know, actually, you wouldn't know about this one, right? This would be more under John. John, so is, anything you want to add?
No.
Okay.
I wasn't fully aware of that one.
Okay, all right. Any questions from the board or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Item G4, consider approval of 2021 budget adjustments.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the attached listing of budget adjustments to the 2021 budget.
Thank you. The township adopted the 2021 budget at the November 10, 2020 board meeting, and various adjustments have been made to it since then. At this time, I'm asking the Board of Trustees to approve the attached budget items to the 2021 budget year. A description of the budget adjustments is explained on the attachments. Wendy, do you want to add anything to that?
I, would the board like me to go through the, in a high, a high level by fund? Or I'm happy to answer questions. I can go through, or if you're comfortable, I do not have to go through any.
Any comments or questions on the attachments? Okay, no, great, thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Item G5, consider approval for a purchase order increase to Harold's LLC for grounds treatment at Pheasant Run Golf Club.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve an increase to the PO number listed in the amount of $9,000 for the grounds treatments at Pheasant Run Golf Club to Harold's LLC at PO Box 935358 in Atlanta, Georgia, 31193, to be paid from the account number listed for maintenance and repair grounds.
At the January 26, 2021 board meeting, the Board of Trustees approved RVA G7, I'm sorry, I'm reading in the background, I'll go up and take the summary. Pheasant Run Golf Club is recommending to increase purchase order 2021-000000690 to Harold's LLC in the amount of $9,000 to cover additional contingencies for various chemicals and fertilizers at Pheasant Run Golf Club. Greg, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, just that these are primarily expenses related to chemicals from the unusual heat that we've had this summer, and then the excessive rain that's drawn in, just caused some additional need for chemical treatments on the course. And then it also draw your attention to the attachment that we provided, just showing revenue year-to-date this year. Actually, it's a little bit out of date now. It's through the end of July. And through the end of July, we were about $460,000 ahead of our eight-year average for this time, through the end of July, for the previous eight years. So the, the course has been seeing significant use this year. Last year was similar, but we didn't, we're actually well ahead of last year's pace because we were shut down at the beginning of the year.
Thank you. Do you think that, so the chemicals are also, do you think because of the increased usage, or is just the increased rain?
Yes, primarily the, the rain and heat, but a little bit because of the usage, just for patching and repair work for divots and those sorts of things on the course.
Thanks. Any questions or comments? Michael?
Yeah, why do you think golf is so hot right now?
Well, it's, last year, one of the few things that you could do. So that really drove interest in golf. But it's also one of the few things, well, it's just naturally a safe activity. You have social distancing built into that activity, and it's just nationwide. It's seen a significant increase, and we're hoping to continue to build on that. Our manager at Pheasant Run has also done a fantastic job of pursuing additional league play, which kind of insulates us from potential weather issues, because that's, those players are more locked in than you're just daily drop-in. But if you try and get a tee time on a weekend right now at Pheasant Run, if you call on Thursday, you're probably not going to get one that weekend. Or if you are, it's going to be late in the evening. So schedule ahead of time.
Okay. And I don't see any talk about the other golf course, Fellow's Creek. Why, why would that be?
Their chemicals are handled through our, kind of... Their chemicals are handled through our contracting company out there, but they have also seen significant increases in play out there as well.
That being absorbed inside the existing contract with the vendor?
Yes.
Okay. I imagine they're seeing a substantial amount of revenue. Good for them.
Oh, actually, all the revenue for that course does come in to the township. They just receive a monthly management fee.
Okay. Okay.
Their, their success is our success out there as well.
Great. Maybe you can get those numbers too to the Board. Okay? Thank you. Kate?
Yes. At some point, I'm wondering if, and it's, I don't need it immediately, but wondering if we can get an idea of what kind of chemicals are being put on the golf courses? And also, I make a request that in the future, we look for companies, and I'm not saying this company doesn't do this, I don't know what they do, but make, make a request that we look for companies in the future that are using more environmentally safe chemicals and fertilizers.
Right. We do use very strict, there are very, there are much more stringent guidelines for golf courses, especially around the, the wetlands, as to what you can use, as opposed to what you would use in your home potentially. Like, we don't use any phosphorus products, those sorts of things that can have effects on pond life and wetlands and those sorts of things.
Right. Phosphorus can lead to overgrowth of algae.
So, yeah, we don't use any phosphorus products on either of the courses.
Right. I'm, I'm more concerned about like pesticides or herbicides.
Okay. Yeah. We can certainly provide an overview to you on the products that we do use.
Thank you.
I, I have the same request. If we can get the details of the products.
We certainly can do that.
What else? All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion passes. Item G6. Consider accepting a FEMA assistance to firefighters grant for the purchase of firefighter physicals and cancer screenings and an associated amendment to the 2021 fire budget.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve accepting the FEMA assistance to firefighters grant for the firefighter physicals and cancer screenings in the overall project amount of $142,000 and $142,080. I also move to approve the attached fire, 2021 fire budget amendment associated with the grant award.
Support.
Thank you. The fire department is requesting the Board of Trustees accept a FEMA assistance to firefighters grant, which has been awarded to Canton in the amount of $129,163.64 for use toward firefighter physical exams and cancer screenings for a two-year period. This grant requires a 10% match by Canton in the amount of $12,916.36 for a total budget of $142,080. So congratulations on the grant. Chris, do you want to add anything to that?
I just want to thank the finance too. You know, Mike Shepard works with me on these grants an awful lot, so we're very pleased to get this grant. We've been looking forward to getting these physicals going for the firefighters for many years and through negotiation with the union, as well as, you know, the township here with HR. It's finally coming to fruition, and I think that it's a wonderful thing to provide for the firefighters. So we're looking forward to getting this going and just fortunate enough to get a couple of years paid for to get us started.
Any questions or comments? Great. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Item G7. Consider approving the purchase of cabinets and furniture for the training room at Fire Station One.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of cabinets and furniture from Kentwood Office Furniture, the township's current contracted furniture vendor, in the amount of $12,144.06, utilizing funds budgeted in the 2021 Fire Capital Outlay Building and Improvements Account.
Support.
Thank you. The fire department is requesting to purchase new cabinets and furniture for the training room at Fire Station One. The department received a quote in the amount of $12,144.06 from Kentwood Office Furniture, the township's current contracted furniture vendor.
Chief Stockline, would you like to add anything?
I think the RBA says everything, but this is all original stuff from 20 years ago when the station was built, and it's our only training room. So we're updating that and had it planned and budgeted, this and the next item as well.
Thanks. All those in favor of the motion?
I have a question.
I'm sorry?
If I may?
Yes.
When was the last time we did an RFP for our approved vendor? You remember when Kentwood was brought on as the approved vendor? Anybody?
I can tell you that they've, they've had this, I believe this is the third year and final year of that.
Okay. So we'll be probably putting out an RFP for that to try to get a fresh number and see who's out there?
I would imagine so. Yeah. We did, we actually thought when we, we looked at this originally that that was expired, but when we went back and looked at that, we found that it was still valid for, I believe, the rest of this year.
Perfect.
Other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Item G8. Consider approving the purchase of audiovisual training equipment for Fire Station One.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of audiovisual training equipment from Metro Detroit Integrated Systems in the amount of $15,681.05, utilizing funds budgeted in the 2021 Fire Capital Outlay Computers and Equipment Account.
Support.
Thank you. The fire department is requesting to purchase new video and audio training systems for the training room at Fire Station One in the amount of $15,681.05 from Metro Detroit Integrated Systems. The township's finance department solicited bids for this project in July and received no bids.
Chief Stockline, you want to add anything? Or Wendy? Nope. Okay. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G9. Consider approving a request for participation in FARO Technologies Certified Training Course.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the request for two officers to participate in the FARO Technologies Certified Training Course in the amount of $17,336, utilizing the buy-one-get-one-free offer from the 2021 Police Training Account.
Support.
Thank you. The police department is requesting to send two officers to participate in a FARO Technologies Five-Day Train the Trainer Program. The cost for one participant is $17,336, and FARO is currently offering a buy-one-get-one free offer. The two officers attending would then be certified to train additional department officers upon completion of the course. Chief Chad, do you have anything on this to add?
Certainly. The FARO Technologies came to our organization, I believe, about two years ago. It is a 3D scanner. Essentially, we use it for accident reconstruction and crime mapping at scenes of crimes. We're one of the few agencies that have so many reconstruction lists in the southeast Michigan. With this program, we'll be able to, it'll be a force multiplier, because when you first look at the price of the training, it's quite considerable. That's what I see when I first look at it, but we'll be able to train many officers in succession planning, because we're going to see, we've, one of the most talented accident reconstructionists retired in the last two years, and you're going to see that coming in the, in the future, as we can train those coming behind will be ahead of the game.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Kate?
All right. I'm just wondering where does the training take place?
I have to take, take a look at that. I believe it may be in Texas.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All the, okay.
I'm just excited that we got the BOGO discount. Exciting.
Questions or comments? Okay. Great. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Item G10. Consider sale of Canton property and authorize Supervisor Graham Hudek to sign all documents necessary to close on the sale.
Madam Supervisor, I move that Canton accept the letter of intent from Maria Harshy, or Harsh, and authorize the supervisor to sign the formal purchase agreement and any other documents necessary to complete the sale of the parcel located at the southwest corner of Michigan Avenue and Beck Road.
Support.
Thank you. On July 30, 2021, Canton's Economic Development Manager received a letter of intent from Maria Harsh, attorney for Cory and Michelle Weaver, offering $6,689.77 for approximately 4.21 acres on the southwest corner of Michigan and Beck Roads, as property number listed. The property was purchased by Canton Township from Wayne County in 2008 to obtain right-of-way should Beck Road be paved. The purchase price was $6,689.77. By law, Canton Township is not allowed to profit from sale of land purchased from tax foreclosure. Cory and Michelle Weaver are the owners of Zippy Auto Wash, which has three other locations in Pittsfield Township, Skyle Township, and the city of Celine. The Weavers are currently under contract to purchase adjacent property at 47725 Michigan Avenue. It is their desire to acquire both properties simultaneously for the construction and operation of a Zippy Auto Wash on the northern portion of the parcels. The letter of intent has been reviewed by Canton's legal manager, and should the Board approve the letter of intent, a formal purchase agreement will be drafted, then signed by Supervisor Graham Hudek. Any comments or questions?
Yep. Michael?
I have a question. I apologize if, I'm looking at the background you just read. We'd initially purchased that property, I believe, if at some point in time Beck Road were going to be paved, exiting the south end of the township and going into Van Buren Township. Do you know, did we, are we keeping an easement, or are we, are we keeping a portion of that property for the same purpose if at some point in time that road is going to be, is going to be paved? I, I, and looking at the road and kind of, and knowing what's there, I, I'm not, I don't expect it will be paved anytime soon, but that's my, that's my, I guess my only real concern with this.
Patrick, you worked with Kristen on this.
With the easement, I'm, I'm not sure if that includes the dedication of the easement or if that easement already exists.
I can check with Kristen in the morning.
So we don't, yeah. Okay. So we don't know?
No, we don't know.
Well, hang on. The property was, okay.
The one with the ban, the building on it right now, that dangerous building that has to be torn down?
Right. No. Okay. Because I had had a conversation with Kristen, our Economic Development Director or Manager, about, about that. Keeping, and I, I can just go quiet and read the, and just, just double-check the letter of intent to see if it's in there if somebody else wants to talk. My apologies.
Also add that into the motion. Does anyone have any other questions while we're reading? Kate?
Go ahead.
So I am wondering a couple of things. One is, do the people who want to purchase this property, are they already aware of the other auto washes in the area, including the, the one that has yet to be built?
They are. We've, we've notified them of the existing car wash that's on the south side of Michigan Avenue, east of Canton Center Road, as well as the proposed car wash on the north side of Michigan Avenue, between Old Canton Center and Canton Center Road. So we've notified them just to let them know that there are two other car washes nearby, but also when they apply ultimately for the rezoning, if they're successful with the purchase agreement, when they apply for a rezoning and a subsequent special land use application, they'll have to address market need at that time.
Okay. Okay. And then my other question is, I guess for Ann Marie, possibly, but I'm wondering, it says in the, I think it's the letter of intent, that the seller shall pay the closing costs? And I'm wondering if we have an idea of how much those will be?
I don't know what those costs are. No, I don't know what they agreed to pay. I guess it would depend on, it's not in the letter of intent at this point, but they will pay the closing costs of the purchase of that land plus.
It says that we will pay it. Not them.
Purchase price, $2,000. I don't know the total cost. No. I do not. It's not in this one.
So I know we can't profit from this, but I'm concerned that we're going to lose money on it if we have to pay a lot of closing costs.
I have to find out from, it's not an estimate, correct? But we can also add in the motion about the easement, if you want, Michael.
So, yeah. I mean, there's, I guess you're right. There's two ways to go about doing that. One would be to table this motion and try to get an answer for that and then address this at a later date. If, I don't know, if they're in a hurry, we could approve it and modify the conditions.
Right.
And I just hope that, that they're comfortable with that. Because if they're not, then, you know.
Beck.
We approved an agreement that's not going to be signed.
So we can table it.
I don't know what you would like to do. I think.
Let's table it then.
You want to do that?
Yep. I don't think there's a date for, they haven't appeared before the planning commission yet. Is that right, Patrick?
They have not, nor have they filed any application for rezoning.
Okay. So I don't see a time constraint.
And I would support the idea that we ask the buyer to pay the closing cost, or, or at the very least split it without, you know?
Yes.
I guess. I think that's a valid concern.
Okay. So we will table this. Can I have a vote on ayes for?
Madam Supervisor, I move to table the motion.
Support. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Nays? Okay. We will table the motion. Item G11. Consider approval for deputy supervisor employment contract.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the employment contract for the deputy supervisor.
Support.
Thank you. The Canton Board of Trustees approved an organizational assessment by Novak Rafftalis in February of 2021. Out of that assessment came the recommendation to create and fund a deputy supervisor position to supplement the increased responsibilities of the supervisor's office. Deputy supervisor position was approved at the July 27 Board meeting. This RBA is to approve the employment contract for the deputy supervisor position.
Any questions? We went over this last week during our meeting with the details. Any questions? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Item G12. Consider approval for creation of ITI department and for IT director position. Oh, no. This is not the latest one. Not me.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the creation of a standalone ITI department upon the hiring of the ITI director. I move to approve the position of ITI director and authorize the starting salary within the estimated, based upon the minimum and maximum of grade 13 of the 2021 non-union classified employee salary grade system in the merit policy, including all applicable payroll taxes and estimated for fringe benefits based upon family coverage. The range approved is estimated between $120,000 and $224,000. And I move to approve the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Thank you. Canton Township has been growing steadily over the last decade and is the ninth-largest municipality in Michigan with 98,600 residents. The needs of the community have also continued to grow due to larger, the larger population, which lead to increased governmental services and governing functions and requirements to Canton residents. Due to the requirements to meet community needs and board goals, several positions were recommended to be created by an organizational assessment completed by Novak Rafftalis in February of 2021. 2021. To meet the organization's evolving technology needs, the township is creating a standalone information technology and innovation department, ITI, led by an experienced ITI director. The increasing reliance of township departments, programs, and residents on integrated technology solutions requires a more coordinated and strategic approach. This is an approach common to many charter townships within Michigan, with Clinton, McComb, and Waterford Townships all having standalone information technology departments to meet their organization's technology needs. This RBA requests approval for a standalone ITI department and an ITI director position. The ITI director's salary and benefits are estimated based on the minimum and maximum of grade 13 of the 2021 non-union classified employee salary grade system in the merit policy, including all applicable payroll taxes and estimates for fringe benefits based upon family coverage. The range approved is estimated between $120,000 to $124,000. Any questions? This is part of also what we went over last week, the presentation. Tanya?
I just have a comment that we, this is a great step in the right direction, because I was surprised when I came in that we didn't have a separate IT department with, while we are handling so much sensitive information for election documents, tax documents, there's always a cybersecurity threat. So I think it is the right step and the right direction, and especially making it, just not IT, but the innovation department, where we are applying to work with different technologies, like we just talked about the broadband and things like that. So I think it would be a great benefit to the community. It will help us make our website better and serve the community better.
Thank you. Summer?
Yeah, I want to agree with trustee Ganguly. I think that this is a great thing for the township. I'm really excited that we will have this position, and hopefully this, the director of this position can help align the IT needs across the township organization to make sure that everything works, works well. Just a question for you, how soon would, are you planning to bring on someone in this position, and how will you be posting and hiring for this position?
So the process requires that we go before the merit committee, which is scheduled for August 30th, next Monday, and we bring this to them, and we bring them a job description, and the merit board asks questions, and then they approve it, and then after that, it's posted. So it could be posted as early as next week.
Yeah.
Michael?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I think, you know, one, I had asked a couple of days ago that we change the position from information technology to information technology and innovation, and I would, why I would like to think that I'm brilliant, obviously as an idea stolen from other communities who have called it information technology and innovation. The most geographically local would be the city of Livonia, but the initial inspiration was Burlington, Vermont, which when we did our vision setting and our mission setting in way back in February of this year, I picked Burlington as my community, and part of what I liked about it was that they had the ITI position, and I liked adding innovation there because it changed the idea from a specific service-oriented reactionary department to a proactive department, and I would hope to see that. One of the things that we would like to see, obviously, is a migration to a .gov website and .gov servers for the township, and to kind of coordinate that with the new township website rollout and a little teaser update to the township logo, right, that township, quote, rebrand, and do it under the .gov, the auspices of a .gov. And the reason why it's important for election purposes and to do it before the next election is the .gov domain creates a significant amount of credibility that you don't get otherwise. Luckily, I did talk to Ferndale City Manager today, before I came to the meeting, and they made the transition in 2011. Now, they're a smaller organization, they have about 167 employees, but the city manager and their IT director were able to make that transition in-house, and it was, it was, it was a little bit arduous, there was a cost to it, but moving from a commercial license to a government license, it can be significant, and it's extremely important as I think you become a, you know, everything in your justification for creating this department. You know, we are no longer the Canton Township of the Jim Poole years, or the Canton Township of even the Tom Yak years. We are the Canton Township that is moving into the 21st century, and, you know, we've, we're already two decades into the 21st century, so, so here we go.
Thank you. Stephen?
Yeah, I am all for this. I, as you know, in my day job, work with directors of IT, and they are very specialized in focusing on technology and for their organizations and the wave of the future, what things are coming down the pike and ensuring security and things like that. But I think we'd be remiss if we haven't thanked Director Trumbull for playing this role for the last decade, essentially. I've always been impressed with her ability to shift from her natural abilities in finance to IT very adeptly at these meetings and give us the information that we asked for, without even having gone to your staff in the meeting. You're always prepared, and I appreciate the work. I know you'll definitely miss my questions when they come along, and so if you want to speak up before the Director of IT, we will allow that, so, but thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a, just a quick comment. At some point, we're going to have to talk about the physical layout of this room.
No, they're going to move floors together.
Gotcha.
All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Is she okay? You want some? Okay. Back to the board, thanks. Item G13, consider approval for the creation of a municipal services deputy director.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the position of municipal services director and authorize the starting salary and benefits to be estimated based upon the minimum and maximum of the grade 11 of the 2021 non-union classified employee salary grade system in the merit policy, including all applicable payroll taxes and estimated for fringe benefits based upon the family coverage. The range approved is estimated between $107,000 and $196,000. I further move to approve the following budget amendment based on the estimated provided by, by Rafftelis for the salary and fringe benefits for this position prorated for the remainder of 2021.
Support.
Thank you. Canton Township has been growing steadily over the last decade and is the ninth largest municipality in Michigan with 98,600 residents. The needs of the community have also continued to grow due to the larger population, which leads to increased governmental services and governing functions and requirements to Canton residents. Due to the requirements to meet community needs and board goals, several positions were recommended to be created by an organizational assessment completed by Novak Rafftelis in February of 2021. The scope of MSD's operations and functions is considerable, with this single department encompassing functions that most local governments would organize into separate departments led by their own directors or superintendents. The creation of a deputy director position for MSD will increase the MSD director's capacity to focus on high-level issues, including developing implementation strategies for the board's strategic objectives and implementing the recommendations included within this assessment. This RBA requests approval for an MSD deputy director position with an estimated salary and fringe benefits based upon the minimum and maximum of grade 11 of the 2021 non-union classified employee salary grade system in the merit policy, including all applicable payroll taxes and estimates for fringe benefits based upon family coverage. The range approved is estimated between $107,000 and $196,000. Any comments or questions? No? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G14, consider approving additional services to the Phase 2 contract for the architectural and engineering services for renovations to the public safety headquarters building and associated amendments to the 2021 police and fire budgets.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the proposal from Partners in Architecture for additional AE services for full replacement of the HVAC system in the public safety headquarters building in the amount of $58,500, and to approve the attached associated amendments to the 2021 police and fire budgets.
Support.
The police and fire departments are requesting additional services be approved to the architectural and engineering services contract awarded to Partners in Architecture on April 27, 2021. The original contract requested an upgrade to the HVAC controls in the public safety building, but upon further review, the department is now requesting to replace all of the existing HVAC equipment servicing the first and second floors of the building. Partners in Architecture is proposing an AE fixed fee of $58,500 for this additional effort and will invoice based on percentage of completion. So Chiefs Stockline and Bow, do you have anything to add?
So I think it kind of speaks for itself. You know, we want to make sure that we continue to use the same architect for the same building. You know, we've had these issues in the past, and it's also been run by all the other directors, so we're all on the same page and working with Cressa as well on this issue. So this is really just the design of the HVAC through that side of the building, ensuring that we have operational equipment that is all working on the same plan, rather than having a couple of different architects come through and trying to mend all their projects together.
Thanks. You had nothing? Anything? I know you guys are working together on this, or, okay, all right.
Between us, Chris is the expert when it comes to this stuff, but it does bring uniformity for the township, so there's not.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Motion passes. Item G15, it's our last item. Let's see, I have it here. I'm going to have to go to another screen. Yes, there we go. Oh, thank you, there it was. Consider waiving the formal bidding process and approval, and approve the installation of temporary fencing around the public safety generator and cell tower.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve waiving the formal bidding process and approve the installation of temporary fencing around the public safety generator and cell tower by AM Higley in the amount of $18,329.83.
Support.
Thanks. The police department is requesting to waive the bidding process and install 216 linear feet of eight-foot temporary fencing around the emergency generator and cell tower located behind the public safety headquarters. Three informal quotes have been received by the township's facility services division, and the recommendation is to go with AM Higley in the amount of $18,329.83. Director Bow, do you have anything to add?
I do, I do. In November, this board approved a project approximately $50,000 to achieve the same goal. We're required by a standard in Kalia to have security around the tower and generator. Since then, that price point went up to over $70,000, and John, since he's came on board, has found another solution for us, and it's coming at $18,000, so it's a modification of the original cost. We expect in the near future to bring a bigger project that not only protects the infrastructure of the township, which is our tower and generator, but also the employees, given to some of the issues that have occurred here recently and some of the notes that we've worked with the Homeland Security, some of the things that we need to do to improve our security around our police building. I don't know if John has a moment he can speak to, but he came tonight to explain some of the process that he went through to put this project together for so quickly.
Do you want to go to the podium, sir? Thank you.
I guess this is one of the first projects that I was roped into my first week, which is a very necessary project as well. I just took a different approach to it, knowing the timetable we were up against, and kind of take the out-of-box approach to this and meeting the goals for the accreditation and satisfying all our directors in public safety. The temporary fencing with a screen vinyl mesh around it will block and enclose all the HVAC systems and the backup generators, so you'll have an eight-foot fence, which is a requirement. We'll have a trim up top with an angle on the outside, so it deters people from trying to climb along with that vinyl anti-barrier as well. We do have three man gates, so we can access to get into any of the infrastructure through there, as well as the tower. So we put the man gates in there, and I assume that we would probably collectively put a combination lock or just the lock under one key for all of us to access. So this will all be harnessed and supported anchors on the concrete sidewalks. We will not have to do any digging to infringe any electrical that might be running underneath the ground there. So that was the main focus I think we wanted. We wanted to get it up quick and serve the purpose as well.
Thanks. So you'll be working nights doing this on your own?
I'm excited to do it, yes, yeah.
Just kidding. Good, just kidding. Good job. Any comments or questions?
I have a brief question. I see that AM Higley wasn't the lowest bidder. Can someone explain to me why we chose to go with them over industrial fence?
Yeah, I can start that off.
If you please.
Yeah, the main focus was that, was one, the vinyl scrim was provided by AM Higley, and industrial fence did not provide that. I guess the most, the one that stands out the most is industrial fence was only a six-foot-high fence versus an eight-foot-high by Higley as well. And another point that I found reading over is that this includes the removal and labor once we are complete with this enclosure too by AM Higley, which is not noted on the other one as well. But just in talking with everybody and going over the project with them, that was another note to add.
Hey, John, wasn't there an aesthetic issue with the barbed wire too?
Correct, yeah, yep. That was, the last point is industrial fence proposed putting barbed wire on top of the six-foot versus a line tension grid, which doesn't look as bad.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board? Nope, good job. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? All right, great, motion passes. So you'll meet the deadline now. Next item on the agenda, any other items from the directors or managers that you want to add? Any other public comment? Do we have any public comment online? Any public comment here? Public comment? Public comment? Nope. Anything online?
I see what appears to be predominantly township employees, a couple individuals who may be from the public, but nobody indicating that they would like to speak for public comment.
Okay, great, thanks. All right. I just wanted to do a quick report to the board of something we found out this morning. Remember, not too long ago, we gave a $2.50 incentive raise to some of our part-time employees. I just wanted to give you some statistics on that. So 40 days prior to us doing that, for our part-time jobs, we had 47 applications, and 12 people that were, had worked for us were planning on leaving. 40 days after doing that, we've had 78 applications, and we've recently had three people say they were leaving. So you can see the amount of applications almost doubled, which were great. So we are right now hiring some, and Director Gray can say a little bit more about what's happening there, but that's really good news. Another study we did, we had some of our HR team look at part-time wages around, and we found that we are pretty much in line with some of the surrounding communities, but we know that that's not our main competition. You know, main competition is basically the stores in Canton, Lifetime Fitness, High Velocity, things like that. And we noticed that some of the things that they were doing is they were posting incentives, like, you know, signing bonuses or great place to work. So we decided to add to our, some of our postings saying things like that you get a free summit membership if you work here part-time, and also $25 golfing. So we made sure that those incentives were out there, so people could see that also. But this is a really good outlook on what, you know, what we did as a board, so that's great. Gray, I don't know if you want to say anything more about some of the applicants we've been seeing?
Yeah, we're still working through screening those applications and seeing how many of those applications will turn into employees. So we're not there yet, but we are in that process.
Yep, so that turned, that turned out well. And we, I also read an article recently that, you know, unemployment, they're saying is only 20% of what's happening. Um, and we, I also read an article recently that, you know, unemployment, they're saying is only 20% of what's happening out there now, they believe. It was a Forbes article basically saying, and also done by the state of Michigan, saying that most of the people they're seeing our unemployment are on the other end of the spectrum that are going into retirement. So it's not so much the younger people, which is, you know, a lot of what we're seeing in our applications. So that's also good news that we might see change, but, um, I think we're on the right track, so I think that's great. Anyone have any other comments or questions?
Well, I would just say, you know, I agree. If we think that in September, things are going to get better in the labor market, you know, there's an interesting study that shows the, of the 20 states that repealed the extra benefit for unemployment, um, versus the remaining states that still have it, there is, uh, no difference in unemployment rates. So I don't know that we're going to have a windfall of people coming back off of work when this is all set, when this, when this benefit goes away, so. I think you're right, people, um, experienced a pretty traumatic year and they are unwilling to sell their labor sometimes at a price that might not be meaningful or to do a job that they don't necessarily think is meaningful. And it'll be interesting to see how we negotiate that in the future. The times have changed.
Yeah, I mean, I would add that, uh, Michigan's unemployment rate is 4.8%, at, before the pandemic, it was 3.9%. Um, and so I don't think it's that much higher than what it was pre-pandemic. At the height of the pandemic, it was 23%. Um, so I think we've come a long way and I don't know that the issues with hiring is necessarily tied to unemployment.
Okay, also, we've been getting, um, GFL still, if anyone has seen out there that we're looking at doing some adjustments. We're trying all kinds of different adjustments to see what works best for the residents. And Monday through Friday, they will be collecting trash and recyclables. And then on Saturdays, they will be able to take all the trucks and work on composting. So they're taking four extra trucks off of composting and they're going to put it only for trash. And then we also have specialized recycling trucks. So we're going to see if that switch-up helps some of our residents and get, get those collections up. We're always watching and we're working with them every day and of course, we, we get people calling still, so. Just to let you know, we're continually working with GFL, trying to do what's best out there.
And that's, this Saturday is the first day that we're going to have Saturday pickup?
I believe so, yes.
Exciting.
And I'm part of it because my compost has been sitting out there over for, for over a week also, so I, we all know what it's like out there.
And the philosophy behind that is to prioritize the sanitary trash pickup, so it doesn't sit out at the curb for a long period of time. And to do that by designating more drivers to solely focus on trash and recycling from Monday through Friday. And then they would, the extra day would be just for whatever's left over from a trash or a recycling standpoint and then the totality of the yard waste in Canton Township on Saturday.
Correct, yes, and so.
Wisdom in that, I think.
There is, and then also you can put your trash into a 32-gallon bucket too, to stop the rodents. I left a bag out the other day and the animals got to it, so I learned my lesson.
Get there. Yeah. I've seen the comments that people have said that they, uh, do their yard work on Saturday. Uh, that said, I have had a lawn refuge bag in my garage for about two months, so, uh, you know, that's an unfortunate thing, I guess, but.
Yes.
Probably not the end of the world.
Right, right.
Also, the lawn clip, I, I used to have a guy who lived down the street from me who, um, had the best yard in, in the neighborhood. And he told me, um, use the, one, he said, keep your grass long, because it protects the roots, and then two, mulch that, mulch that grass in, back in there, especially with this Canton clay, you gotta, you gotta rebuild that soil. And he was right, he had the best lawn in the neighborhood. My lawn is not nearly the best, at all.
My neighborhood's a competition. So Greg, do you want to talk about some of the, um, leisure services items coming up this week? Actually, there's a Punjabi festival on Saturday, that's going to be at Heritage Park. What else is happening?
There's also, um, as you may know, a, uh, mini-triathlon this Saturday in Heritage Park.
Yeah, my daughter is participating in that.
Oh, so am I, I'll look for her.
We have a guest of honor with the township supervisor, uh, competing in our triathlon this weekend, so that's exciting.
No pictures?
Oh, we'll be taking pictures.
Um, and then, uh, the biggest one is the picnic in the park coming up. Um, I'm going to blank out on the date, the 24th, August 25th, or not August.
Not August.
Today, September 24th, yes. Um, I'm going to double-check that right now because it's the Friday, so yes, it is September 24th, um, for, um, the fireworks celebration and some concerts in Heritage Park.
And last week, um, trustee Borninski and I witnessed the, um, the fire winning the police in a wing-eating contest, so sorry about that. But you did both raise money for charities. I was a little bit worried about some of the, the officers have, um, eating some chicken like they were. But luckily, the police and fire were there, right? All right, great, anything else? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Would it be appropriate to have the second round of public comment?
Oh, yes.
Yes, for that.
Okay, beautiful, then I move to adjourn.
We can have a third round.
For.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Meeting adjourned.